Welcome, everybody, to the March 13th Board of Commissioners meeting. And just we did tab one yesterday, so today we're going to start with the invocation and the presence of allegiance, and then a moment of silence of the Commissioner where the firm talked about shortly.
Will you pray with me? Father in heaven, I come humbly into your presence this morning, and yet I also come boldly, knowing that it is through my Savior Jesus that I have been granted access to one as glorious and holy as you. Come this morning interceding for the men and women who serve Cobb County as district commissioners. You tell us, Father, that without you, we look for light, but all is darkness; that we look for brightness, but we walk in the shadows; that we're blind, feeling our way along a wall of light people without eyes. You tell us that without you, we have ears, but we do not hear. Yet you also tell us that if we'll humble ourselves, if we'll lift up our eyes to you, to remember where our help comes from, that it comes from you, the Maker of heaven and earth, that you will watch over us, you will keep us from harm. Our Father, you are the source of life, the only source. Forgive us for having forsaken you, the spring of living water, so that we could dig for ourselves cisterns that are broken and incapable of holding water. Yet, in spite of our unfaithfulness, you do remain faithful, because you cannot deny yourself. Because of your faithfulness, you want us to know that if we'll humble ourselves, we can ask you, and you will generously give wisdom to us without finding fault. So, I ask that these men and women, as they deliberate and discuss weighty matters, may they draw close to you for the wisdom needed to make important decisions that affect the welfare of hundreds of thousands of people, and may their decisions reflect your goodness and love, your compassion and glory. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mind, if you'd remain standing just for a moment, I have an announcement to make that saddens me to do that. Cobb County Fire Department has lost one of their own yesterday. Firefighter Stacy Bullware, age 44, collapsed while on duty after just returning from two rescue units. One was a wreck and a full arrest. After saving lives, she gave her life for this county and for our country. She's now taking her place among those that are honored and heroes, and we would like to have a small moment of silence in her honor. Firefighter Stacy Bullware. Thank you. Rest in peace, good and faithful servant. Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. And belatedly, our invocation this morning was by Reverend Trey Tankersley from the North Metro Church, and our pledge is led today by Deputy Timothy Broome, so thank you both. So that, we're going to start with the tab two today, and we have a presentation.
If Joe and Stephanie will come up front here. Joe, Tommy? So before I tell you about this wonderful lady and tell you all the things she's done, I don't even want to think about this. I mean, she's the first in Cobb County to accomplish this. So this is Stephanie Taylor. She is a Contracts Management Coordinator for the county, and she's been notified by the National Contracts Management Association that she has successfully completed requirements for a designation as a Certified Professional Contracts Manager. Now, y'all wonder what that took. After meeting educational and work experience requirements, Stephanie was required to pass a rigorous examination to receive her certification. And like I said, she's the first Cobb County person to do this, so congratulations.
This is actually Stephanie's second certification in about a year. She was recognized here last year as getting her certification in purchasing as a professional public buyer. So this is quite an accomplishment, and both of these require a great deal of study, and also, as Commissioner Ott said, she has to pass a very rigorous examination. So congratulations, Stephanie. We're really proud of her.
I asked her when she sleeps.
You do us proud. Okay, now we're going on to tab three, and Mr. Wilkis will lead us to a public hearing.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. This item is to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvement Program. In the implementation of the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvement Program, the department anticipates awarding engineering design contracts for several projects that could exceed $100,000 for over the next six months. So we request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvement Program.
Okay, thank you. Before I start the public hearing, just wanted to remind everybody that you each get three minutes. There's no limit to the number of speakers. So that I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone that wishes to address this issue regarding various projects for the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvement Program? Does anybody here would like to make a statement regarding that? See, none, 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 declares public hearing to a close.
Thank you, sir.
All right, on to tab four, where Ms. Stanley. Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This morning, we'd like to request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing regarding procurement of professional services for planning, design, development, and implementation of a Unified Court Case Management System. Professional services for this project are expected to exceed $100,000. Notice of public hearing for this project was advertised in the Marietta Daily Journal on February 23rd, March 2nd, and March 9th of 2018. At this time, we request you hold the public hearing as advertised. This request is for the public hearing only. Once a vendor has been selected by an RFP process, an agenda item will be brought back before the Board of Kishmaish just for approval.
Okay, this is what I understand, is that we're going to do the public hearing, then we're going to vote on this, right? Or just to hear it?
No, sir. This is just open the hearing. We have an RFP that we'll be putting on the street for selection of a vendor later.
Okay, just want to make sure I do this right. Okay, so that, same guidelines, no limit to the number of speakers, three minutes each. So is there anyone? I now declare this public hearing open on the Unified Courts. Yeah, I'm going to make sure I get this right here. There's so much, this is a pretty complicated program.
Yeah.
The plan, design, development, implementation of Unified Court Case Management System.
Yes, sir.
Would anybody like to make a statement regarding to this proposed program? Would anybody like to make a statement regarding to this recommended, this proposed project? See, none, none, now declare this public hearing to a close.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sharon.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development here to do two public hearings for Chattahoochee Corridor certificates. The Chattahoochee Corridor Certificate, and this is going to be for both items, is based upon a law passed by the Georgia General Assembly in 1973 called the Metropolitan Rivers Protection Act that requires that the Atlanta Regional Commission review land disturbing activities within a certain radius of the Chattahoochee River. The first of two public hearings is in regard to a single-family residential construction at 4240 Paces Ferry Road. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you to open the first public hearing on 4240 Paces Ferry Road, the MRPA certificate.
Okay, and now declare this public hearing open for the construction of a single-family residential building at 4240 Paces Ferry Road. Does anyone here like to address this topic? Yes, please. Yes, ma'am. When you come up, please state your name and your address for the county clerk's records, please.
My name is Niva Mullenberg. I live at 4686 Burne Hickory Road, Marietta, 30064. And Mr. Johnson is talking about land disturbance on this property. I don't know the history behind any of it, but I would like to find out what qualifies for a land disturbance permit, and the buzzword was land disturbance on this property. And I've been trying to reach out to the county, and I've been prohibited, I've been banned from talking to anyone in community development. My emails have been blocked. I cannot find an answer regarding what qualifies a person that wants to build a house or a structure on a property to have to require a land disturbance permit. So I wanted to take the opportunity, it's not what I'm here for today, but I wanted to take the opportunity to find out where to go at Mr. Dana's, or Mr. Johnson's office to find out what the requirements are to require a land disturbance permit.
Okay, so your question, does it pertain to this property or just in general?
This property.
Okay, so Dana, what's the guidelines for a land disturbance for this property, given that it's covered by this by the state act?
Land disturbance permit depends on the type of construction that's occurring, sir.
Okay.
If it's a single-family residential construction, as this is, then they would require a building permit. If they are going through a commercial or a subdivision plating process, they would need to go through and submit plans through the Site Plan Review One-Stop Process in order to obtain permission, sir.
So there's a house on here already, right?
There is an existing home on this structure, it is being taken down, and a new home is being placed in its spot, sir.
So they'll need both then, correct?
Say that again, sir.
They'll need both, the building permit and the...
They would need a demolition permit to remove the structure.
Right.
And they would need a building permit in order to construct the new residence.
Okay.
But because they're, because they are doing this within the buffers of the Chattahoochee River, they must go through the MRPA process, sir.
Sure.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, too, is one of the things that has been in the past an issue with tear downs and rebuilds is changing the base elevation of the property. So in addition to the things that Mr. Johnson just described, if this particular property owner were to change the elevation by more than four feet, then they have to come in front of them, they have to bring it in front of the district commissioner for approval to change the elevation by more than four feet. So when you have these tear downs and rebuilds, there's quite a few steps along the way to ensure that they do not impact their neighbors.
Okay. Is there a question over here? But since they're going to tear it down and rebuild, they're going to obviously disturb land, right? So why wouldn't they need a land disturbance permit also?
The land disturbance permit is for subdivisions and commercial structures.
Oh, I see, okay. Gotcha.
By issuing the building permit, the county is also giving them permission to disturb the land.
So anyway, would you please address this lady's concerns? You know, she's, you know, offline, but when you're wondering, there's nothing to do with this hearing, but offline afterwards, they're all over about this, right? Okay. All right, okay. Bookended here. Appreciate your discipline.
The second item, sir.
Well, I need you to do the public hearing on this first.
Oh, sorry, yes, we do. Yes, sir.
Does anyone else like to discuss the property at 4240 Paces Ferry Road? Okay, see none, I now declare this public hearing to a whole, close, and now turn this over to Commissioner Ott for the motion.
Right, I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for construction of a single-family residential building at 4240 Paces Ferry Road.
We have a second, a discussion, call the question. Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item is also a Chattahoochee Corridor Certificate for, actually, for the Fulton County Airport, which has some land on the Cobb County side of the river, which is for their approach area, which is just off of Lee Industrial Boulevard. And I would ask you to open a MRPA public hearing and consider approval of a MRPA certificate for this particular property in regard to installing navigation and light towers that are FAA required for Fulton County Airport.
Is that the correct pronunciation for that acronym?
M-R-P-A.
You had me lost at MRPA.
I usually add U to it when I'm saying it, sir, but it's...
I didn't see a MRPA down here.
Metropolitan River Protection Act, sir.
All right. I now declare this public hearing open on the Certificate of Compliance to relocate and replace navigational light structures on the approach to Fulton County Airport. Would anybody here like to address that issue?
My only question is, will Cobb County be paying for the work that will be done on the strip of land that's in Cobb County for the airport?
This is, who's paying for, the FAA is providing a grant to have these, to have these lights relocated, correct? This doesn't come out of the county funding, this comes out of the...
The county has no financial obligation to what Fulton County Airport does.
Right.
But because this portion of the airport is in Cobb County, the MRPA certificate must be approved by the Board before commencement.
Yeah, the approach lights are on the county property, but the approach lights are paid for out of FAA funding.
That is given to Fulton County, yes, sir.
Right, okay. All right, and either, does anyone else like to address this issue? See, none, I now declare this public hearing to a close, Commissioner Cupid. I move this is yours.
Yes, I move that we approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance to relocate and replace navigational light structures on the approach to Fulton County Airport.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, a discussion, call the question, and pass the five to zero, and then Dana, get with the county attorney here to adjust Ms. Lance's concerns, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, tab six, public comment. How many do we have today, Ms. Dance?
We have five.
Five, okay.
And the first speaker is Stephen Hughes, if you would come forward.
Good morning. My goal is just to share a few ideas of why I support our Cobb County libraries. I've been in the Atlanta area for about 33 years. First 20 were up in Sandy Springs, and during that time, I very rarely visit the library. Moved 13 years ago to Vinings, and luckily, I'm walking distance to the Vinings branch. I'm there about three days a week. And what I see at the library are people that are trying to improve themselves, people that maybe don't have the resources that all of us have, that use the computers, that are checking out books, checking out research material to, again, try to improve themselves. And I just, I want to be sure that the Commissioners appreciate the role that libraries play in building literacy, improving the whole economic quality of our life, because this is helping, helping future citizens, even senior citizens. The principal of the elementary school that serves our area shared an interesting story. When Home Depot relocated their corporate headquarters, again, chose Cobb County over other counties, they got a lot of people in their IT department that were actually Indian immigrants. And she said the test scores in their school went up dramatically as these people came in. And I observe, when I'm at the library, I suddenly see some of these same families checking out 10, 12 books for their kids. You know, these are people that are trying to improve themselves coming here, and I just want to make sure that we appreciate the economic impact and the social impact. My wife and I are actually putting our kind of money behind our passion, and we've committed to give $25,000 at this branch to improve the children's library. My wife is a teacher. We've already given the first $5,000, the next will come over the next four years. So it's something that, again, we believe sincerely in. I'm a member of the Cobb Library Citizens Support Area, what's their proper name?
Foundation.
Foundation. And so again, this is something I just wanted to share my personal thoughts, and I understand that, you know, we've got financial issues, and if there's a modest consolidation, ones that have a smaller, much smaller tenants, those are very possibilities. But in terms of our overall libraries, they make a big impact in our community, so thank you for your attention.
Stephen, thank you for your very generous contribution to a very important part of our county programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kit Trench.
Good morning. I'm Kit Trench, and I also serve on the Cobb Library Foundation Board, and I'm coming here today to also speak on behalf of the libraries. From a little different perspective, I work in higher education. I used to work at the fabulous Southern Polytechnic State University, which is now part of Kennesaw State University. And we believe that education makes the difference in people's lives. And certainly, I have been able to see from my involvement on the Foundation Board and from just being on their Facebook page, honestly, all of the programs that they support, that the library initiates and supports on behalf of children, and learning activities beyond that which they receive in school. So I also would like to implore you all to consider not cutting the libraries. I agree with Stephen that if some need to be consolidated to, for financial, economic impact reasons, I agree with that, but I implore you to save our libraries for the impact they make on our county. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement.
The next speaker is Tisha McCullough.
Good morning. Excuse me, good morning, my name is Tisha McCullough. I made a special trip here this morning. I no longer live in Cobb County, and give me a moment, because this is going to take a minute. I'm a little emotional this morning. I'm not at a good place. I, again, I used to live in Cobb County, and on September the 1st, I passed out at work, passed out at work because I was under a lot of stress. And I was under a lot of stress because I was dealing with a lot of racism. I was dealing with a lot of harassment. And during that process, I filed an EEOC complaint, and during that time, I filed an EEOC complaint during in-house. And at that time, I worked in the second-largest department on campus, had outstanding stellar background, and during that time, I had to do a lot of retro act and do a lot of bad pay. And again, when I passed out at work, they had to rush me to Kennesaw Hospital, and I went out on a lead of absinthe. I need you to walk through this theory, because my life had been turned upside down. I, again, lived in Cobb County. My home was, at the time when I was living in Cobb County, was broken in so many times. It's a disgrace. I'm still dealing with this, because the case is ongoing. I lived in the Cuddlesack. I lived in the Cuddlesack. My home was constantly being broken into, and the front door, my mother told me when someone was, is constantly breaking in your front door, they're trying to make a statement. And my surveillance camera was showing that my neighbor was breaking into my home. And I was working with one of the lieutenants on Astell Road, and I was showing him the cars of my neighbors who were breaking into my home. And I was documenting every time my home was being broken into. And I was working at one of the largest colleges in Kennesaw. And when I say the setup is real, the setup is real. And I'm still dealing with, it took two years before my investigation even got started. When I say they got the government on me so bad right now, and it prolonged the investigation. Again, my background is stellar. There were a lot of accusations that were made on me. That's not true, and I'm dealing with all this repercussion. And I lived in my home for 19 years in Cobb County. When I say all my silver and human rights have been violated, it's not good. And I had to constantly, constantly call the police to my home, and I knew that someone had a second key to my car. Let me give you an example. One day, I had my driveway being redone, and I noticed my next-door neighbor circling around. And like, again, I lived in the Cuddlesack, and I saw my next-door neighbor, he had a black SUV circling around, and the Cuddlesack, and I noticed I had pulled my 300 Chrysler in my yard, and then I saw him pull it in my yard, and God said, "Stun steel." I was standing in my, and on the side of my door, he pulled up in my yard, and my neighbor across the street was flicking his light to let him know that I saw him. On that Monday, neither one of them went to work. I called the lieutenant to let him know that I saw them. Neither one of them went to work. And I called, the young lady called back, when the lieutenant didn't come to work that Monday, and she asked me, "Was I okay?" I told her, "No." And she said, "Well, the lieutenant isn't at work. This is just one example that I'm giving you." And I said, "All is not well." And she said, "What do you want me to do, a patrol zone or zone patrol?" I said, "Not right now, later." I said, "Because I'm scared."
Okay, ma'am, let me ask you something. Are all these issues being litigated? Whatever the campus issue was, we can't deal with that because it's not a county facility, but are these other issues about the break-ins with your home, are those being litigated right now, or...
I had to end up moving out my house.
Okay, well, I'm really sorry to hear about that. Is Sam here? Yeah, could you do me a favor? That's the Director of Public Safety back there, Sam Heaton?
And that's why I just came today. You could go on and on.
No, what I'd like you to do is at least talk to him about what your issues were, because sometimes we can do better, all right? And I'd like you to talk to him, and Mike Regis is our Chief of Police.
Okay.
And if there's something we can do that we didn't do well, you know, we can learn from our past mistakes. And I really, I really appreciate the courage.
And I'm here today because I'm just really not at a good place today. I had to end up moving, I had to go into a program. I had to end up moving out my house. I had to end up going, and I'm being harassed so bad, because people don't want me to talk. People trying to shut me. I have helicopters flying over my apartment now, just like my home. People are trying to shut me. I'm tired of living in silence.
Well, like I said, I really am sorry from the circumstance, it takes... It takes a great deal of courage to come here today and say that. I know that, I can see that. And what I want to do, what you do is work with Sam and Mike about what we can do to make sure it doesn't happen again in this county if it has happened, and what we can do better. So again, I appreciate your time this morning.
And I'm sorry I had to speak out loud.
That's okay.
And the reason I came here today, and I want to say this, and you can look at my background. My nephew got murdered, and he went to the college where I was. And if I don't do it for me, I got to do it for him. And I'm tired of living in silence. I'm in seclusion because people are trying, I promise you, people are trying to keep me quiet. And this is, my life has been horrible because people want me to be quiet, and they follow me around because they don't want me to get this out.
Well, you're not quiet anymore, and we got you on video and everything. So your story's out there.
Thank you.
Please see Mr. Heaton.
It's been horrendous. My life has been, I'm living now, they shut my heat off. I don't have any heat where I'm living. They doing stuff to me for me to be quiet.
Well, we heard you this morning, so thank you for coming.
I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm glad you came.
The next speaker is Neva Mullenberg.
Do I need to repeat my address again?
I think we have you already. Thank you.
Okay. I want to talk continuing about the wall. We call the Berlin Wall from here to New York City. Is it possible? I don't have a thumb drive. I just have a photograph. Okay. Thanks. I am in litigation with my neighbor. I didn't want to go into litigation with a neighbor about this. I begged and pleaded everyone in the county, Dana's office, all the way down to the neighbor. I wasn't feeling good at the time. Ultimately ended up being diagnosed with cancer and had to deal with this through chemotherapy and everything else. It's been a nightmare for me, Commissioner. But this is the wall that my neighbors built, 11 feet of soil behind it. And so, when I, I live in an estate community where we live on one acre wooded lots. And these people, I sold an acre of land to them, and they promised in writing in a signed document that they would follow all the restrictions for the county as well as our covenants. And instead of building and keeping and maintaining with our community, we only have five lots in our community, they built up 11 feet. And their drainage is pointed onto my property. I'm flooded. It's eroding the hill behind my own retention wall. And that wall is, and it's at the peak, eight feet, three inches. And it's measured from my property line to the height of that wall. Behind that wall is an additional two or three feet of soil. And the county code, 134267, I believe, says that, I would like to put this picture up if I could, says that the wall is six feet max from my property line wherever they're building there. And it's eight feet. Now, on the right-hand side, and we'll switch gears because I'm going to talk quickly, that is their drain device. That's their wall, the end of their wall. They pointed the drain device in the back of their property to my land. They built this right on the land, right on the property line. And we'll put this one up here. I'm going to look. This is the zoning. I'm going to put up the zoning from 2005 where the Burnt Hickory Estates was approved. And on the lower left-hand side, item number three, it says that, right here, right there, that little section, it says that there is to be a mandatory five-foot setback preserved for drainage in between the lots. I brought this to the attention of Community Development while my neighbors were constructing this wall on the property, saying that it was not in code compliance, it's not in keeping with the compliant or with the zoning from 2005. And they ignored it. The county ignored it. I have all of it in writing. I'm going to put this up. The next photographs that I'm going to show you is when they were constructing what we call the Berlin Wall. It's a 100-foot length wall. So when I go out of my house, I feel like I'm in a bucket. Because I look up to this wall, and it's from my ground level, it's probably 12 or 15 feet high. You're looking at the lower left side there. Those are the footers on top of backfill. That's four, Mr., that's probably four feet of backfill that came gushing out from behind the wall, underneath the wall, onto my property. When they were constructing the wall, Polymer Construction Consultants said that they inspected those footers that we're looking at, and that they were in compliance and gave the county compliance letter. And those footers are supposed to be 11 inches underneath the frost line, but they're four feet above backfill. And that wall is not stable, and it will come down eventually with enough hydrostatic pressure behind it. So the lower picture on the right is the footers, which are sitting on top of the soil, at the foot of the hill. And at the top, that's just a close-up. And on the left, you see the silt fence that is still up two years later, and it's dilapidated, falling down onto my property. Those, that photograph is showing the, again, the soil coming out from underneath the wall. I'm going to give you that photograph. And what this wall is doing is the 11 feet of backfill that they've put up on this property is being channeled from the back of that wall. And that piece of strip of land is my five foot that I cannot build on. So they've got their water directed down my hill from the back of their land. And then in the front of their land, they have it directed at the front of my property. And I'm being flooded, and it's eroding, I'm going to show you this. It's eroding my property so badly that this is now what it looks like. It's just a mud pit out there. And this is a person, actually, their father worked on the zoning board years ago. That person is five feet, nine inches tall, and that's standing on my property line. And the county is telling me that that wall is six feet from my property line. It's impossible. And it's ridiculous that I have to fight this fight, but that's not even ground zero for me. So when I back up, I'm looking straight at a wall, and it's violated every county code. It's violated the covenants and restrictions. It's violated zoning. And I don't understand why the county won't do anything about it.
Well, I appreciate your time this morning. I understand that we're in litigation about this, so.
I'm in litigation with my neighbor, not the county.
So I can't comment. Right. I have to, okay, we have to.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyce, I've addressed the county attorney. They won't return a call nor an email.
Well, she's right there.
So I'm shut down by the county, and I'm shut down by the county attorney's office. I have nowhere to go.
We have to, we have to follow the policy here of these issues are being addressed through the county attorney. All right? And none of the board members can discuss this for obvious reasons. So, but I appreciate you bringing the pictures to us today. It certainly highlights the issue. And somewhere along the line here, I'm not sure how this works out, but this one's out of the hands of the board. This one has to be hands of the county attorney and whatever litigation with your next door neighbor.
Well, I would like to find out what the county policy is by not being able to communicate with me. Because before we went into litigation, I communicated with every single level of the county except the county attorney.
Well, what I would encourage you to do is that in these sort of matters, your attorney talks to our attorney, and that's how it stays.
But that costs me money that I should not have to spend because Community Development didn't do their job to begin with.
I'm not going to litigate this case right here, okay?
I don't want to litigate, Mr. Boyce, but I would like to know what the policy is that says that no one can talk about it. I would like to know so I can.
You have been responded to by the county.
But where's the policy?
You've been responded to by the county, and that's the statement I'm going to stand on right now. I'm sorry. So your time is up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Delancey.
Good morning. My name is Monica Delancey. I live in Ostel, the Riverside community. First, I wanted to just announce that there's going to be a Cobb County School District meeting tonight at South Cobb High School, Willa High School, and North Cobb at 6:30. And on the agenda will be updates about federal funds that come to Cobb County School District. That's Title I funds, Title III, Your Career and Technology Funds, as well as Homeless Prevention. So that's going to be at North Cobb, South Cobb, and Willa High School at 6:30 PM tonight. What I would like to address is concerns about keeping issues that are of utmost importance to residents that live in Cobb County. Sometimes residents are not able to come to speak at 9:00 AM in the morning because they're either in eviction court, or they're in defects, or they're running between two or three jobs trying to take care of their families. So they still need their issues addressed. That's why you're elected. It should not be saying that because you don't show up at these meetings, that's the only indication to say that housing is not a concern. It is a concern. It comes up a lot during your studies, during your research, and your data reflects that. In addition, all of you have at least one school that is classified as an economically disadvantaged school. All of you in your district. District Four is 80% of the schools. District Two is 50% of the schools. So all of these issues are of utmost importance. It's hard, it's a challenge sometimes to come to these meetings. You have to pay for parking now, nighttime and daytime. If you're coming from the south part of the county, it's a 45-minute trip if there's no traffic. So I just wanted to make sure that we still understand that the issue that pertains to housing gets addressed. And also, you know, these same people that are suffering in silence, I may say, you know, we have to elect our Board of Commissioners who are supposed to be, you know, maybe bringing these policies to place. In addition, we have to elect the judges who enforce. If somebody is brought up for eviction, they have to enforce the law. Then we have to elect the sheriff that come and put you out. So this whole process is pretty much confusing. But most, at least you do have a person like myself that comes all the time, use my own resources, is not being paid, and yes, come on my birthday to make sure that these issues get addressed. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Monica. Thank you for your comments. Okay. And that's all the speakers this morning. And we'll go on to tab number seven, which is the consent agenda. And I'll just let him scroll through the items here before I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. With that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Second, in discussion, call a question. Pass the five to zero. Thank you. All right, on to tab eight.
Good morning again, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. We have five items this morning. The first item is to approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for intersection improvements on Post Oak Ridge at Henry Road. Post Oak Ridge at Henry Road is an approved project in the Intersection Improvements Component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $1,348,365.70 from Glosson Enterprises LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $1,243,570.70 in roadway cost and $104,865 in water system cost. The completion date of July 21st, 2019 has been established for this project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,348,365.70 for intersection improvements on Post Oak Ridge at Henry Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, Jim. I'm very happy to see this finally in paper and writing. This is something we've been working on since I first took office, and it is on the 2016 SPOLOST list. So I think it will be a big reliever for the subdivisions Wynwood and the area around there, as well as Pope High School. So I make a motion to approve.
Second, in discussion, call a question. Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Just as a moment of pause before this, our next three items are on resurfacing for the 2018 projects. And just so that everyone's aware, the volume of resurfacing that we're doing right now is about half of what we need to do to maintain our roads. But that's what we have in the SPOLOST. Anyway, item number two is to approve resurfacing contract 2018-1, Countywide Major Thoroughfare Local Maintenance Improvement Grant with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. for resurfacing of county maintained streets. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $9,745,636.20 from CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The contract completion date for this work is April 30th, 2019. We request the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2018-1, Countywide Major Thoroughfare Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, AL-MIG, with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $9,745,636.20 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Yes, Your Honor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, in discussion, call a question. Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is to approve resurfacing contract 2018-2, Local Road South with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for resurfacing of county main streets. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $3,395,621.05 from Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. A completion date of December 31st, 2018 has been established for this project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2018-2, Local Road South with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $3,395,621.05 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Patricia Cupid.
So moved.
Second, I have a question.
Sure.
I see a little dis.
I see a little disparity, and I'm assuming it's something to do with topology, but we did nine million for nineteen miles, and now we do fourteen miles for three million.
The difference between the two contracts, the thoroughfares is for wider, larger roads. This is for generally neighborhood roads, local roads.
So, it's wider, so therefore there's more quantity, is what you're saying, even though the miles are less?
Yes.
Okay, just thought I'd ask that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is to approve resurfacing contract 2018-3 Local Roads North with Bartow Paving Company, Inc. for resurfacing of county maintained streets. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $3,407,47.30 from Bartow Paving Company, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. A completion date of December 31st, 2018 has been established for this project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2018-3 Local Roads North with Bartow Paving Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $3,407,47.30 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Ms. Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Second, in discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is to approve consultant service agreement with Thompson Engineering, Inc. for engineering design of Campus Loop Road, Big Channy Road, Chastain Road. Campus Loop Road, Big Channy Road, Chastain Road is an approved project in the intersection improvements component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The department has negotiated a final scope of services and fees with Thompson Engineering in an amount not to exceed $45,319.86 for engineering design of Campus Loop Road, Big Channy Road, Chastain Road. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Thompson Engineering, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $45,319.86 for engineering design of Campus Loop Road, Big Channy Road, Chastain Road.
Ms. Burrow.
Thank you, Jim. Another great project, motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our first item this morning is for the Board to approve a contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility Incorporated for improvements to Green Meadows Preserve under the 2016 Park SPOLOST program. Green Meadows Preserve is a 126 acre park located on Dallas Highway that was purchased with 2006 Park Bond Funds. The park already boasts walking trails throughout the property and one of the county's busiest community gardens. The 2016 Park SPOLOST program identified several improvements to be made to the park, including addition of a restroom structure, paved parking with access from Old Hamilton, stormwater detention, and additional landscaping. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility Incorporated for improvements to Green Meadows Preserve in an amount not to exceed $923,933.70 under the 2016 Park SPOLOST program.
Ms. Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Second, in discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Our second item is for the Board to approve a contract with Leatherwood Incorporated for the rehabilitation of the historic farmhouse and adjacent small barn at Green Meadows Preserve under the 2016 Park SPOLOST program. The original house structure was constructed in the 1840s with modifications being made in the 1890s, the 1940s, and the 1950s. We will concentrate on the 19th century aspects of the house with repair of deterioration and termite damage, replacement of the front and side porches, restoration of the original floorings, ceilings, et cetera. We will also be making structural and roofing improvements to the small red barn adjacent to the house. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Leatherwood Incorporated for the rehabilitation of the historic farmhouse and barn at Green Meadows Preserve in an amount not to exceed $623,360 under the 2016 Park SPOLOST program.
Ms. Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second, in discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Our third item this morning is for the Board to approve a contract with Southern A&amp;E LLC to provide design and construction administration services for the Hyde Farm Operations and Agricultural Processing Complex under the 2011 and 2016 Park SPOLOST programs. Hyde Farm improvements to date include the rehabilitation of several farm structures to their original state, the next project to support the ongoing agricultural operations on the farm. It will provide secure storage of farm equipment and support the revenue generating, processing, storage, and distribution of crops produced from farming the property. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Southern A&amp;E LLC for the design and construction administration services for the Hyde Farm Operations and Agricultural Processing Complex in an amount not to exceed $197,990 under the 2011 and 2016 Park SPOLOST programs.
Ms. Burrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This gets us one step closer to the original ideas for Hyde Farm, so a motion to approve.
Okay, just one, so the O&amp;M for the farm, we're going to put that in the 19 budget? Is that what we're working on?
This facility is more to, it's got a bunch of different uses, which is why, but we haven't talked about O&amp;M yet because we haven't talked about opening yet, you know, fully to the public.
All right. But there's no O&amp;M associated, cost associated with this program particularly?
No, well, this is not really a program, this is a structure. But what it's doing is it's setting up for, because Parks and Rec is, they're working on the terrace gardens.
Right.
Okay, and then we have the master gardens, have the garden pots out there.
Right.
And this is just kind of setting up so that there's place to bring the stuff that they're doing in the gardens.
Okay.
So, right now, the programs that we've been doing over there are pretty much self-sufficient.
Right.
And that's why it's taken so long, is because, you know, we have the house for the ultimate, when we ultimately have a caretaker or a farmer, but we had to have the other facilities and things in place, and so it's just been a gradual process.
So, when it does require additional staff or whatever, that would come back to us?
Right. Because the plan has always been, right now, we have a part-time caretaker over at the Felton property, and, you know, every six months or so, we come back and we renew that contract, but ultimately, the goal will be to take that position and move it to Hyde.
Oh, okay.
And so, but we needed to have the facilities first.
Sure.
To be able to do, because what happened was about three or four years back, what the county did was we actually talked to farmers, and we talked to folks that were going to come and actually use the land to find out what was going to be needed to make it all work. And so, it's been a gradual process as the county had the money to do the different projects.
All right, good. Thank you.
Will we see Jack and Jill again?
With that, I call the question. Passes five to zero.
Our final item this morning is for the Board to approve the acceptance of a $44,000 donation from the Atlanta Hawks Foundation Incorporated, authorize the preparation of the site utilizing 2011 Park SPOLOST funds, and authorize the construction of an outdoor basketball court at Wild Horse Creek Park. In 2015, the Atlanta Hawks Foundation committed to building 25 outdoor basketball courts in the metro Atlanta area. The first two years of courts were, the first two years of court donations were to communities inside the I-285 perimeter. Cobb County was approached by the foundation last year about possibly placing a court in Wild Horse Creek Park. With receipt of this donation, Cobb County will be responsible for preparing the site, and a contractor will be installing the actual court surface. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the grant agreement with Atlanta Hawks Foundation in an amount up to $44,000, authorize the preparation of a site utilizing 2011 Park SPOLOST funds, authorize construction of an outdoor basketball court at Wild Horse Creek Park, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form acceptable to the county attorney's office.
Ms. Cupid.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm glad to see this item move forward. Would like to thank Kealan Mitchell by name. He's with the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs Board. He did advocate for this project and was quite helpful in getting this to move forward. I'd also like to thank Terrence Ramsey also, who has also been working with the organization to make this happen. So, with that, I move that we approve this agenda item.
Second. Second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. The property manager has three items this morning. The first is to approve a supplemental agreement number one final to the contract with QT Contract Incorporated DBA Powers Heating and Air for the HVAC system installation at Magistrate Court. The magistrate court renovation is an eligible capital improvement project program under the 2011, 2016 SPOLOST. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOLOST project budget. The commissioner, the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one final to the contract with QT Contract Incorporated DBA Powers Heating and Air in the amount of $22,158.26 for the HVAC system installation at the magistrate court located at 32 Waddell Street, Marietta. A 2011, 2016 SPOLOST project authorized the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Ms. Burrow.
Yes. A motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our second item is to approve a supplemental agreement number one final to the contract with Simplex Grenelle LP for the fire protection system modifications at magistrate court. The magistrate court renovation is an eligible capital improvement project program under the 2011 and 2016 SPOLOST. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOLOST project budget. The Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one final to the contract with Simplex Grenelle LP in the amount of $30,646.27 for fire protection system modifications at magistrate court located at 32 Waddell Street, Marietta. The 2011 and 2016 SPOLOST project authorized the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Ms. Burrow.
Yes. I just want to say, I'm sorry that I had to miss the ribbon cutting last week, and I knew you were there, Mr. Chairman, but I do look forward to seeing the renovations in the new magistrate court, and Judge Holmes has agreed to give us a private tour. So, with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second. And Scott, I also want to echo what Commissioner said. What you did over there and your team did, that was a work of art. It really is.
Thank you, sir.
It is just a magnificent piece of art protection, what you and your team did. So, thank you for all the great work that you did, and please convey our appreciation to the team.
Thank you again.
And with that, I call a question. Passes five to zero.
What? Our final item.
Everybody else said party.
I'm just the chairman. I don't know what that means yet.
We understand.
Item number three.
Our final item is to approve closeout supple agreement number two final to the contract with Batson and Cook Company for the rebuild of Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center. The Sewell Mill Library Cultural Center rebuild is an eligible program under the 2016 SPOLOST. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOLOST project budget. The Board of Commissioners approve the closeout supple agreement, supple agreement number two final to the contract with Batson and Cook Company in the amount of $191,726 for the rebuild of Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center, a 2016 SPOLOST project located at 2051 Lower Roswell Road, Marietta. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Ms. Burrow.
Speaking of works of art, Scott and his folks did a tremendous job over here, too. Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second. Next question.
Okay, sure.
Does the budget for this, with the $2 million from the state, was it 12 million or the 10.6 was including the state money?
I have to get with you afterwards, look at that with you, okay?
Mr. Burrow, do you know the difference?
I think it includes it, but I think Scott will have the answer, right?
Yes, I can get it.
I'm fairly confident it does.
Yeah.
Right. Because we did, when we opened up the library, we mentioned it at the time, and asked and thanked the state for their support for the.
Right, but the SPOLOST was 10.6 on the list.
Right.
And that included the $2 million. Did that include the $2?
No, SPOLOST doesn't include the state money.
Okay.
Right.
So, you're within the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Okay, so, call a question? Passes five to zero. Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have one agenda item, that is to approve the cost for reallocating the licensed radio frequencies on the Cobb County 800 megahertz radio system using 2016 SPOLOST program funds, public safety radios, program X1011. This move allows Cobb County to continue the construction and build out of the new 2016 SPOLOST tower sites. The total cost for the frequency reallocation will be $22,347 available through the public safety radio SPOLOST fund. There's no annual costs. I would ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the frequency reallocation project for the 800 megahertz radio system, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Ms. Weatherford.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, thank you, Jim. Good job.
Excellent, sir.
That's actually one of the best presentations he's ever made.
Once again, I'm just the chairman. I'm not sure what that means anymore.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Please, save me. You and Millie.
Yes, sir. This morning, I am pleased to provide a recommendation for the Board's consideration as to the appointment of a new Public Services Agency Director. This morning, I am going to be recommending to the Board that we appoint Mr. Willie Tanks as the new Public Services Agency Director. I have known Mr. Tanks for some time, did a fantastic job as the deputy chief for Cobb Fire. Similar to myself, had retired and came back to do something a little different, and I think that the Board will find that Mr. Tanks provides a wealth of experience, very, very energetic approach to the job, and look forward to working with Willie. I know he's going to do a great job, and would request that the Board accept the recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Willie Tanks, sailor extraordinaire, as new Public Services Agency Director. Have a second?
May we have him come forward?
Yes, we can. Willie. I want to make sure that you're here when we vote on this, all right? This will be your last good day. Because I know exactly where all my emails are going to go now on certain topics. So, with that, I call a question. Passes five to zero, and would you like to make a couple of comments, Willie, please?
Yes, let's see, I got my speech here on the cell phone. First, this five minutes, okay, this will come from my heart, but just to keep me on course for the sake of time, I do, first, I want to thank God for this great country and our great county. I am absolutely in love with Cobb County. I can't hide it. I don't even try to hide it anymore. Started off in Six Flags back in the early 80s. I lived all up Six Flags, Westwood Villas, all the townhouses there, worked for the fire department, and got to know this county and the people in the county, and Cobb is just a wonderful place, so I'm very grateful for this opportunity to serve. I do want to thank the county manager and the committee. I know that was a very tough decision, a very thorough process, very professional, and I thank you for what y'all put together, and it says a lot, especially with the competition. It was, it means a lot to me. My side conversations this morning with Sandy and James and Helen, who's a good friend of mine for a good while, and Jimmy, they've been very humbling. This is an awesome team of folks that I get to work with. It's just eye-opening, and then I'm very grateful for my public safety friends here today. I shouldn't have a list to remember their names, that's sad, I worked for them 26 years, but when you're on stage like this, you need to keep things on script. Of course, Randy and Sam, friends of mine for many years, I got Bill, Kevin, and Mike here, so I appreciate. here, so I appreciate y'all being here. The board's vote of confidence, to me, is very much appreciated, but is also tempered with this great responsibility that I have to our citizens and our visitors to advocate for efficient, high-quality public services. And so I am very honored for this appointment, Mr. Chairman and the board, and I'm ready to get to work.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Pat? John Deck?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, we have five items on the agenda today. All five involve ratification of contracts for the Parks Bond Project. The first one is to ratify action taken by the board in executive session, authorizing an agreement to purchase, or for purchase and sale, rather, with Pamela S. Downs for the acquisition of property located at 4055 Ebenezer Road in the amount of $700,000 for a public park under the 2008 Parks Bond Resolution and 2017 supplemental bond resolution.
Commissioner Burrow.
This has been a long time coming, and I am very excited as well as a lot of you who are here today and in the audience at home that we're getting a beautiful piece of property and the next item will add to this. So I make a motion to approve.
Give a second. In discussion, call a question. It's all yours.
The second item is to ratify the action of the board taking an executive session, authorizing an agreement for purchase and sale with Pamela S. Downs as trustee of the RJS Family Trust under agreement dated March 26, 2017, and Eileen Hamilton Steele as administrator of the estate of John R. Struther for the acquisition of property located at 4057 Ebenezer Road in the amount of $1 million for a public park under the 2008 Parks Bond Resolution and the 2017 supplemental bond resolution.
Commissioner Burrow.
Just one thing I'd like to point out is that the two properties together total 18.3 acres. I think there was a discrepancy in one of the newspapers, so I just wanted to make sure it's 18.3.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Give a second. In discussion, call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, the third item we have is to ratify the action of the board taking an executive session, authorizing an agreement for purchase and sale with Matthew Thompson for the acquisition of property located at 4700 Stylesborough Road in the amount of $388,000 for a public park under the 2008 Parks Bond Resolution and 2017 supplemental resolution.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. A motion to approve as presented.
Give a second. Discussion?
Yes, I would like to thank the two parties involved on this one and the next one while we can. The Leona, Leona Price Trust Fund has worked with us diligently with Mr. Riley for all the hard work he did and Mr. Matthew Thompson for these 10 acres and made this all come together. It was a, it was a long journey, but thank you especially to Mr. Riley for all your due diligence there, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
The fourth item is, oh, did the vote call already? Ratify the action of the board taking an executive session, authorizing an agreement for the purchase and sale with Naomi C. Holland as executress of the Last Well and Testament of Leon Hall Price, also known as Leon Hall Johnson, for the acquisition of certain parcels of real property identified as tax parcels 2001950040, less than except 40 acres, which is not a part of this transaction, and tax parcel number 2001960060 comprised by approximately 106.5 acres in the amount of four point, excuse me, $3.434 million for a public park under the 2008 Parks Bond Resolution and 2017 supplemental bond resolution.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, one small admin note.
Zero, type is zero. My apologies.
Okay.
Now you know why you're the chairman.
With that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero.
Okay, that's a good catch. The fifth item is to rat, that, that was 3.434 million dollars. Acreage on that is 106.5.
With two together?
No, just this piece. Final item is to ratify the action of the board taking an executive session, authorizing an agreement for purchase and sale with Daniel Keith Fur as successor trustee of the Lewis A Fur Trust for the acquisition of property located at 4570 Old Westside Road in the amount of $587,200 for a public park under the 2008 Parks Bond Resolution and 2017 supplemental bond resolution.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Pat, for your work on this. I'm so moved.
Second, give a second. In discussion?
Is everything working out?
Yeah, we're moving forward with closing on the fur property tomorrow.
Yes, okay. Then I'll call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Where's the cup?
Oh, God.
I know even you're really happy about this. With that, we now go, we just had public comment, I mean, Commissioner Commons, right? Okay, Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two things. First one is announcing my next town hall, which will be on April 23 at 7:00, and it'll be at SunTrust Park in the stadium conference room. There'll be directions in my newsletters, but you'll enter at the Wrightfield Gate and Park of the Red Deck. Good opportunity to come find out what's going on in District Two and about the budget and the Cumberland area. Tomorrow, I have been invited to participate in a memorial service. We've heard a lot about walkouts tomorrow from schools, but what's happening at Walton is kind of, kind of really unique. The students and the administration have gotten together and they're going to have a memorial service for the 17 students that were killed down in Florida. So I'm going to, I was asked to participate in that tomorrow, so that'll be in the morning at 7:40. But what's kind of really interesting, and I'm going to just read this, this is, it's titled #What'sYour17. As a way to grieve, honor, participate, and find a positive way to impact our own school and reach out to the staff and the students at Parkland High School, we are asking every student and every staff member to join in and embrace the hashtag, #What'sYour17 here at Walton. The idea behind #What'sYour17 was started by Marcy Cusper, high schooling teacher at Jay Sterling Morton West High School in Berwind, Illinois, with the simple idea of doing 17 positive things or one thing 17 times to honor each life of the 17 students and staff members of Parkland High School. What better way to react to this tragedy than to bring about change in each of our own students and staff by asking them to choose their own 17 things to impact our school and climate, our school climate? Beginning Monday, March 12, during all three lunch periods all week long, there will be a banner lining the main hallway from the atrium to the counseling suite where everyone will be able to fill out a heart-shaped #What'sYour17 card. All the cards will be placed on the banner and on display for the next two weeks so everyone can share their ideas on how each of us can impact others in a positive way, bridging boundaries between us. From something as simple as offering a smile, a kind word, speaking to someone we have never spoken to before, or even offering friendship to someone who may need it, or someone who is hurting, we can all make a difference in our school, we will roll up the banner and send it, all of our cards, to the students and faculty of Parkland High School. We will let them know how we honor their 17 lives lost and how each of us have pledged our #What'sYour17 to make a difference in our school. So I think that that's making it into a teaching moment and making something memorable.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
I have kind of a different announcement to start off. Not yet. Not yet. My first announcement is in reference to zoning case OB4 and SLUP3 from the February 20 BOC zoning hearing. In reviewing the minutes, I discovered some discrepancy in the hours of operation, and after consulting with the county attorney, I have been advised that this can be corrected with a motion to amend something previously adopted and does not require an other business item hearing. I intend to bring this motion forward at the March 20 zoning meeting. However, due to the prior miscommunication surrounding the zoning case last month, I would like to announce the proposed amended conditions for clarification today and to give the public a week's notice to review prior to the BOC meeting on March 20. The amended conditions to be proposed on the March 20 zoning hearing are restricted office hours for Sunday, noon to six, and combining the original number four item with number seven due to redundancy. And all other commit, all other conditions remain the same. You can email me to request a copy of the documents, and they will also be available on the agenda item for the March 20 zoning hearing. I have submitted a copy for the clerk, so they are public, and also the county attorney has a copy. And I just wanted to announce that first. Next is on a sad note, we lost a very special K-9 officer this weekend. De Sol, who most of y'all have known and loved for the past 10 years, retired last year, and he passed away over the weekend. De Sol is a result of a fundraiser that I spearheaded back in 2006 to bring him to the county, and he was a faithful servant, made many arrests, and we're very sad to lose De Sol. March 13, Coffee with Your Cop. Our police community affairs team is doing a wonderful job reaching out to the community, seeking to build a bridge of communication and collaboration with the community, and the next Coffee with Your Cop in District Three will be held Tuesday, March 13, today, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Chick-fil-A at 2105 Roswell Road. And then another special announcement, March 21, at Sprayberry High School Theater, the Sprayberry Crossing Action Group are hosting a community meeting from 6:00 to 7:30 at the theater, 2525 Sandy Plains Road. Myself and the chairman, along with some other elected officials and county staff, will be represented and speaking with regard to the shopping center across the street. So everyone is invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Also wanted to announce Coffee with Your Cops. This will be March 15, which is Thursday, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at 3451 Cobb Parkway at Arts, Bagels, and More. Come out and meet your Cobb police officers. It's a community event, and we've had good attendance at most of these, I think, and this is at the intersection of Mars Hill Road and Highway 41. So it's a good chance to come out and meet your community policing officers as well as myself as we get out and talk about what's going on in the community. So that is Thursday at 7:30 to 9:00 at Arts, Bagels, and More. And this afternoon, we will be doing a groundbreaking for the new North Cobb Regional Library. That'll be at 3535 Old Highway 41, which is directly across from North Cobb High School, and we'll be doing the official groundbreaking and have several people talk about what's going on as well. So we're pleased to announce that a new library will be being built, and it'll be a regional library that'll be the consolidation of both the Acworth and the Kennesaw Libraries, and looking forward to that completion date, hopefully within a year from now. So that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to congratulate Willie Tanks again on your appointment. It's great to see you back here, not only as a constituent, but also as a peer. Also like to take some time to recognize our, our Department of Watershed Management, as referred to by de cab. I just know them as the Water Department here, but they are very grateful for the efforts that Cobb County took to provide materials and support during their recent water crisis when they had a water main break. I know we have a relationship with a lot of governments on other matters in the county, in particular, I hear about it when it comes time to address storm events and events in public safety, but little did I know the partnership that we have in this area, and just want to thank you, Steve, for your team being willing to lend a hand to de cab county during the past week. Some things going on this week. We have a continuation of our block versus our cops. I don't know how many of you remember that at the Fair Oaks Recreation Center, but that's going to be taking place again, where we have some members of the community in Powder Springs play against the sheriff's office, and that's going to be this Friday, March 16 at 7:00 p.m., and I believe that's going to be free. Also, in Powder Springs, we have an alternative baseball day, which will be March 18 at 2:00 p.m. at McKitcher, and we'll have the West Cobb Trail Blazers versus West Georgia Dinamo's, and we'll be starring players with autism and special needs and hope that you can come out and support members of our community at that event. As Monica shared, there is a meeting tonight at South Cobb High School to learn more about federal funds that will be coming to the county, and that meeting is from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at South Cobb High School. For those of you who couldn't have attended, who could not have attended our work session yesterday at 1:30, we addressed transit legislation, which is moving through the House and the Senate and is in joint conference. The county commission has been active in sharing our opinions about how that could move forward, but we also like to get public opinion. If you couldn't make it to the work session yesterday, I just encourage you to reach out to all your commissioners and let us know your thoughts about transit here in Cobb. And you can also email transitbillcomments@cobbcounty.org to let the county know about your thoughts. Our very own Ross Cavett has launched a strong social media presence with respect to this topic, and you can also engage on social media to weigh in on transit in Cobb County. Finally, I'd like to thank all the staff and all the residents who came out to my first town hall meeting of the year. It was held at Milford Baptist Church, and we had a very strong attendance and had opportunity to learn a lot about the county. Like to thank staff for your presentations and Eric Meyer for providing a presentation on transit. I was surprised to learn how much support there was in the room for us moving forward with more robust transit investment, and just, I'm just curious to see how that plays out throughout the county and within our state this year. And finally, I just want to apologize, this is the, I think, one of the first solid waste authority meetings that I've missed this year, and this morning, my children's basketball hoop got to know the windshield of my car over, over the evening with the, with all the crazy weather that we've had there. So I just appreciate all that the agencies have been doing, particularly Keep Cobb Beautiful and District Four. We've had record numbers of cleanups this year, and we just recently have a partnership with one of our businesses that's going to help in picking up bags after cleanup events in our district. So we're just grateful to see District Four become a cleaner environment and a, and a. So we're just grateful to see District 4 become a cleaner environment and a better environment for us to live in and drive through every day. With that, thank you.
I'm going to yield my time to Commissioner Weatherford.
All your time.
All 10 seconds.
I was reminded, I forgot to mention that we'll have a joint town hall meeting on April 10 at 6:30 at Acworth City Hall with the City of Acworth. We do one of these every spring, and so that will be on April 10, so everyone's welcome to come out and hear what's going on in Northwest Cobb as well as the City of Acworth. That'll be April 10 at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
And with that, we're adjourned.